Yeah.
While we're on air.
Ooh, look at that, right there. Pretty cool. Where's Paul? He's still going to the bathroom. Alrighty.
Talk to Judy. That was my bad.
I'll say. I'd like to call the City Council regular meeting for Monday, March 4th, 2024 to order. Please rise and join me as a clerk of the House. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Welcome, everyone. The agenda, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. This evening, we do not have any presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. We'll move on to item four, response to public comment. I don't believe we have any this evening. Thank you. That completes item four. And, public comment. We'll open up the podium for anyone wishing to speak to council on any item not on the agenda this evening. To do so, please come to the podium, state your name, and address, and your comment or question for council. And seeing no one in the audience at this time, we will close the public comment and proceed on to the consent agenda, which we have items 6A through J include our bills listing, minutes of the February 20th regular meeting, donation acceptance from State Farm Bank for safety camp, the 2024 Leprechaun Day service agreement, ball field use agreement for ISD 1917, joint powers agreement for the National Guard Armory and Community Center remodel project, appointment of additional election judges for 2024, approval of contract award, commissioning of the building systems at the Public Works and Police Campus. I understand that's the last major contract award, the Parks and Recreation Bylaws Amendment, and donation acceptance from Torrey-Eid for the Fire Department. Any council member wishing to pull any item for further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to pull F and J.
F and J are pulled. Any other items from anyone?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, then I'll move the consent agenda, items 6A through J with items F and J pulled for further discussion. Is there a second?
I'll say again.
Got a second by Freski. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Kimpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Completes items, or the consent agenda except for F and J is approved. We have item 6F come up first. Councilmember Tyson.
Yeah, I pulled this just because there's some changes that are going to be happening in the community. You'll see at the National Guard Armory and the Community Center remodel. So I just asked Dan to come and speak a little bit more about this.
Alright, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you know, the National Guard Armory is taking on quite a large remodeling project. The total cost is a little over $27 million. The building is about 100,000 square feet, and they will be touching every surface and every system of the building owned and operated by the National Guard. So they're going to be in there. Every floor surfacing will be new. They're replacing every outlet, every light, every ceiling panel. Any, any and most non-load-bearing walls will get removed, and they will be replaced with a metal stud wall as they reframe in offices and classrooms and things like that. So it's quite a large undertaking for a 30-year-old building. This is all being done to better house the National Guard in that space. This is the second-largest armory in the state, next to the headquarters up in Arden Hills. And so we do have quite a bit, quite a bit of activity in this, in this building, both during the week and on the weekends. And so, you know, they're, they're doing quite a bit. And at that time, we were approached by the Guard a couple of years ago to talk a little bit about this project with them. And we identified a number of improvements that we actually needed to make. And then we also added some other improvements into our plan, where originally we were looking at about a million-dollar project through working with the Guard and through kind of looking at really, you know, do we need to replace elevators and some things. We were able to get that price down to the 672, 771 number. So improvements that you're going to see on the, on the Community Center side include replacing a hot water heater. We'll be replacing some air compressor equipment that runs the HVAC controls for the city. We will be replacing the windows in the Parks and Recreation Office. That is being done because all of the other windows in the building are all getting replaced. So we felt it was the right time to do it. Right now, we have very few operational windows on our small area of the building just because of the age and the equipment is outdated. We will be also adding some hot and cold water equipment into the space. We will be doing quite a bit of exterior repairs on the building. So that's tuck pointing, brick repair, foundation repair, things like that. We will be putting in a new dumpster enclosure as they are no longer allowing us to have dumpsters that are up against the building. So this one will be what we're calling front of house by the banquet hall, but it'll be along the curb line. We're also doing some finishes to the Park and Rec Office, ceiling tiles, lighting, some paint, some things like that. And then also, we are doing some other site improvements in the way of tiles and painting of door frames, replacing doors, things like that. And then the final item is the translucent panels in the ice arena. If you're familiar with the ice arena, on the south side of where the bleachers are and that south wall, we have our original 30-year-old translucent panels, which should be nice bright white, allowing a lot of light into the building. Because they're 30 years old, they're now dingy and tan and brown, and definitely have had their life expectancy met. So we are replacing those as part of the project for us. Some of the other things that you'll notice, and I had in my memo here, is that the National Guard is actually looking to come into compliance with current National Guard standards. So they have really strict standards for every division that they have within the Guard. So whether it be the band, or RSP, or infantry, or whoever that might be, they have specific thresholds for square foot space for all those groups. And so I can tell you that there is not a space in that building that is going to be unused. They're not, you know, they're not remodeling this saying, oh, we gained some extra space. They're actually using every square inch of that, that, that building for, for the purposes of the National Guard in that guard-only areas. They're looking to meet the National Guard standards, also the UFC. They're also looking to meet the State of Minnesota accessibility and energy codes. Some of the things that I think is important to know is that, I already mentioned that this is the only second to the Division Headquarters. They host weekly trainings, monthly trainings for drill weekends. They have 50 full-time personnel there during the week at a minimum, and then anywhere from 250 to 300 soldiers there on the weekends. And so, you know, we've had a long history of working with the Guard, and we continue to plan on doing that. One of the things that, that they are looking to do that I'll just call out is that they have, they're currently not meeting some of the standoff distances from where vehicles and the general public can access the building. They also have, they have a chiller and a generator that are not in a secured space. So some of the things that they're going to be doing is really about security and safety for, for the people at that facility. And so with that, they will be expanding their secured fenced areas, which includes extending fencing all the way back to the curb on the west side of the building between the Armory and the dome, which will not, which will stop traffic from cutting through there any longer, which is unfortunate. And we had a lot of conversations about maybe trying to avoid that, but it just wasn't, we weren't able to because of the, of the, of the, that spacing that they need for their security. We also, they're going to be shrinking that back west parking lot a little bit, and they're going to reorientate the parking to go north and south, which, again, it's not the end of the world for us. We like to have that area for people to drop off and come for, learn to skate, and for some of the younger kids to come in for hockey and stuff like that. So we'll continue to park all of our city vehicles up top like we did over the weekend for the expo and leave that space down below for, for our constituents and our customers to use at that space. The last thing I will say is that they are also doing a lot of work on sidewalks and landscaping and actually beautifying that building. So what I will be doing, moving forward from today, because today was really the actual start date for the real part of the remodel today, is the date where they took over the entire shared space and Armory spaces. I'll be bringing monthly updates with photographs and before-and-after pictures and things like that to show the people what, what is happening. But, you know, there are going to be some changes to some of the classrooms. The band is picking up a couple extra classrooms just for their use. So we're losing a couple classrooms, but we're confident that we can work with the band and try to maybe share some of those spaces with us like we've done in the past. A lot of changes to where the bathrooms are, where they are today and where they'll be in the future. And then also, the classroom, the main larger classrooms are going to be accessible off that main hallway, right across from the auditorium where those church pews were. That will be glass walls with classroom space in there. So, so we're going to have some nice public amenities that come out of this. They're also gutting the auditorium, putting in all-new chairs, AV equipment, things like that. So there's a lot of good things that are going to come out of this project. You know, we had a couple, a couple little blips on the radar of things we maybe would like to have seen stay the same, but with time, you know, and the needs changing of the National Guard, we understand why they're doing this. But they'll also be doing a little bit of work to improve the stormwater drainage on that site. That was one of the issues that, that they've dealt with for quite a while, with water getting into the lower level of the building and things like that. So they're going to be fixing those issues. But with that, we are looking to enter into a joint powers agreement with the State of Minnesota and the Department of Military Affairs. We would be paying them on a quarterly basis for the improvements that we are part of. And then we would, again, be bringing you updates as we go through this project, a lot like the lifetime updates that we bring.
Well, I appreciate all that, and that was, that was a great overview. We, just with, with the expo this weekend, we had all kinds of people walking through there. And we started to see some of the planning that they're doing that they started today. So a lot of questions came up, so this helps answer a lot of those questions. They've been a great partner in the past, and it's great to see that not only when they're remodeling, that we could actually do some of the remodel that you are looking to do or were looking to do from a city standpoint and save some dollars that way as well.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yep. I didn't mention, but the contractor on the project is BCI. I think they're out of Sauk Rapids. And then they have several local contracting firms that work with them that are local firms that work here in the Twin Cities that are helping out with the project. So they're looking at probably 20 months to complete.
Let me see in there. Other question?
Yeah, so, I mean, first of all, you know, it's, I think there's a perceived, there's definitely a perception that this is a, this is a city facility. So I think the fact that we're getting all these upgrades, you know, for the, for the cost here, $673,000, I think is tremendous. Question on the 20-month construction period. So, and I know this is utilized pretty heavily by the community. You know, a lot of community events are here, a lot of community activities. Organizations use this, use this, use this location. Over the next 20 months, what are they going to be able to use and what are they not going to be able to use? Like the gym, the classrooms?
Correct. So councilmember Essler, what, it's easier to tell you what they can use. They'll be able to use the banquet hall. And we're kind of reserving the use of the banquet hall in most occasions for evenings and weekends.
Okay.
We're trying to stay out of there during the day if we can, just because there's so much work happening like right around the corner.
Yep.
They'll be able to use the ice arena still. The gym will not be available. The classrooms will not be available, and the auditorium will not be available. And so we've worked with all of our customers.
For like the whole, basically the whole 20 months?
Basically the whole time.
Ouch.
And we've worked with RAA, we've worked with all the other groups and, and the other, you know, the, the groups that meet there on a regular basis. We've helped them find other spaces. A lot of them, we've got coming over to the Steeple Center to use that space. And so we're still able to have some events in the banquet hall because that's really not being touched. The only challenges we run into is, you know, when they decide to shut the water off for, you know, a certain period of time, we need to coordinate with them that, that, you know, they're not going to be impacting our users on a weekend when there's a wedding reception or there's, you know, a large event happening in that space. And, and we think the contractor is going to be good to work with. We've met with them already a few times to talk about some events that we're planning that we need to make sure that, you know, they're not hammering a hole through the concrete wall 50 feet away from the banquet hall entrance. And they've said they can do that. But we've helped some of these groups secure spaces, like through community ed, at the meeting point, some churches. So, you know, we've known about this project long enough where we've given these groups heads-up on this is coming. Here's what it's going to look like. We provided them with contact information. We've kind of connected the dots for some people. You know, we looked at certain groups and said, boy, you'd be, you'd be great to meet over, you know, at, at this church. Or you'd be great to just take your, take your meetings over to, you know, room 200 at the Steeple Center, and we can coordinate that for you. We've offered our conference room to some of the real small groups. You know, if there's a group of six people on a finance committee from RAA, you know, we can open up our conference room in our office, which is going to be available. And so we're looking to try to help these folks out as much as we can because we've had relationships with these, a lot of these groups for 30-plus years. And, and like the stamping club, it's a small group, but they've been meeting in classroom 212 for as long as I can remember. And we don't want to see them be displaced and have nowhere to go. So we've been kind of helping people find places to go.
Okay. And then you didn't specifically mention any of the upgrades in the gym, but because it's not available for these 20 minutes, I'm assuming there's some upgrades or some renovations going on in the gym?
You know, they're, they're just, they're more cosmetic than anything.
Okay.
They, they will be doing some refinishing on floors, and they're doing, you know, they're really looking to get rid of that blue, that light blue flooring and the light blue carpeted wall.
Are they putting hardwood floors in?
They're not putting, that's not a, it's not a standard, and we asked them, approached them on that, and that's not something that they're interested in. They do too much military drilling on there with equipment and stuff. And it's just not compatible for hardwoods, so.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Yes.
Minus more of a comment, but just to like bring it all home, because I think this is a good project. The total cost for this is $27 million.
Correct.
The city is only contributing $673,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing additional.
Yeah, I think, I just wanted to note particularly the residents are probably, you know, they're driving by there and all of a sudden fences started showing up today, maybe even earlier.
Yeah. And so it's. Earlier.
Radar's going up, what's going on, you know, type thing. And hopefully that allays some of their fears and just recognizing it's going to be a long project at 20 months.
Yep.
Alright. Any other, otherwise?
Yeah, just one more. What have we done from a communication to the community in terms of, you know, communicating what's going on? You know, the, the fact that it is going to be a 20-month construction period? Have we notified? Have we put anything in the newsletter?
We have, we have, we have had things in our newsletter.
Okay.
Parking Rock brochure and things like that. Now that the project has started, we'll work more with Lee just to announce that it has started what's going on. But we've been working directly with all of our user groups and folks at our customers on a regular basis for probably the last eight to 10 months, letting them know about, especially RAA because of the gym use and some of the struggles.
Well, and to bring it up just because it's such a visible, you know, I mean, people drive by Highway 3 and everybody sees it. So they may not be associated with those organizations, but just wondering, why is there fence around?
Yep. And Lee will, Lee will get some pictures, and she would, we've already talked about that. She'll get ready to put some stuff out and let the community know what's happening and what they can expect to see.
Awesome. Thank you.
Alright, then. Would you like to go ahead and move the recommended action?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve entering into a joint powers agreement with the State of Minnesota Department of Military Affairs for the remodel project of the Rosemont Armory and Community Center.
Second?
Second.
Second, motion by Tyson, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Kimpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
And that approves 6F 5-0. We'll move on to 6J, donation acceptance from Torrey-Eid.
Yeah, I just thought it was, just wanted to point out that there was a donation to the Fire Department, the local Fire Department by this Torrey-Eid, and I just wanted to pull it just for the, for the recognition and just say thank you. So I wanted to document it here. So with that, I'm just, I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the expenditure of $100 from Torrey-Eid to be used in the operations and equipment for the Fire Department. We appreciate the donation.
I'll second.
Motion by Tyson, second by Kimpel. Roll, please.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Kimpel?
Aye.
And that completes 6J with a 5-0 approval. Item number seven, public hearings tonight, request by Spectral Alloys for the vacation of drainage and utility easements and the Doyle Path right-of-way. And look to... You're not Anthony Nunchek, so.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'll be taking this one for him this, this evening.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a continuation of Spectral Alloys' expansion. This is probably the, near the last step that you'll be able to take an action on as a part of their project. So a little bit of the summary of what they're requesting here for you guys this evening. It would be a vacation of the drainage and utility easements within a parcel that is now owned by Spectral Alloys, as well as requesting the vacation of Doyle Path, which is a public street, and its associated public rights away as the street is now only internal to the Spectral Alloys property off of Highway 55. And just a little bit of a note there that this vacation, you know, the city doesn't often vacate streets, but the vacation of this right-of-way will relieve the city of the responsibility of maintaining that road, and it will solely serve Spectral as a driveway for them. So just a little bit of a geographical reference. You can see Highway 55 right adjacent to Pine Ben Trail there. Their parcel is outlined in red, and then the expansion area, the newly acquired parcel is highlighted in yellow. Little bit of site history, and some of this is a repeat from previous actions that you've seen, but just to kind of put this in its context here. But a little bit of background on Spectral culminating in just this past, two years ago now, I guess, warehouse building, expansion with office space, paving, a parking area as a part of there. Overall, I want to say it's 70,000 square foot expansion plan that they are advancing on. An existing aerial showing the expansion. You can see the, the newer area of the asphalt there, and then the gravel area that will be covered and used for storage. I have some additional photos that kind of show what that'll look like in its upcoming renderings. So again, another aerial looking kind of north and west here along Highway 55, which is on the left side of this photo. This is a rendering as a part of the site plan that was approved by their planning commission at their last meeting, showing the visual from Highway 55, increased landscaping and buffering. The outcome of this is not only increase in jobs, tax base in the new building, but also really a cleaning up of the site. I mean, you saw the, the history there, 1973. It's a, it's an older, heavier industrial type of business that are moving towards more modern processes. And what comes out of that are new buildings along Highway 55 really has dressed up the site nicely, and will continue to do so with their proposed expansion. And here's just a shot of the plat, but this one, I think, shows a little bit better where existing Doyle Path goes into the site. And as you can see, the, the property is surrounding the entirety of that, that street. Couple elevations of the site, of the building. Again, the council isn't taking action on the building or site plan per se. And I was before you last month, as we went through the, the plat process, this is the culmination of those activities. One of the conditions of approval was the vacation of the, the easements as well as the right-of-way for Doyle Path. So two motions, and this is a public hearing. So two motions before you this evening to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of drainage easements within lots 1 through 3, Block 2 of Holland Beck and Nelson, Inc., First Edition. And then a second motion to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of Doyle Path and the associated public right-of-way easement pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 412.851. And again, this is a public hearing, and after that I can stand for any questions or at this time, too.
Any questions for staff at this point? Just one, could you pull up the, the map that shows Doyle Path? And just curious, did that path end there or did it actually go all the way through the site and back out the other entry?
Let's see if we can show the, you can...
I was trying to understand if that kind of looped through the site or if it just...
So it does loop. So you can see the, you can see my cursor here, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
That loop right there.
So it does go through that other parking lot and then the other?
And then you can see here that the black outline is the public road that is Doyle Path with that cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Right here, so.
Okay.
So if we jump back up to the actual plat, you can kind of start to see the outlines there. And then showing where that right-of-way is requested to be vacated.
Great. Alright. Any other questions or comments at this time? With that, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for council on, on the vacation for drainage easements or Doyle Path may do so at this time. The podium is open. Going once, going twice. Seeing no one moving towards the podium, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Motion to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Public hearing is closed. Back to staff. Any additional comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll look to each of the motions separately to move the recommended action. Motion number one.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of drainage easements within lots 1 through 3, Block 2, Holland Beck and Nelson, Inc., First Edition.
Second.
Motion by Essler, second by Kimpel. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Kimpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0. And the second motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of Doyle Path and the associated public right-of-way easement pursuant to Minnesota Statute 412.851.
I'll second.
Motion by Kimpel, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Kimpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
That completes the second motion 5-0 and completes our public hearings for item number seven. That completes the second motion five zero and completes our public hearings for item number seven. We have no unfinished business this evening, nor any new business. We'll move to announcements, city staff updates.
Thanks, Mayor, members of council, a couple items tonight. First of all, just wanted to thank, uh, members of the community for coming on out to the community expo this weekend. Just had a wonderful time, uh, really, I think those of us that have been here since the beginning, it's certainly our most well-attended expo we've ever had and so a lot of new energy surrounding it and, and that's in large part thanks to, uh, Alicia Grant on our community development staff, so just a wonderful job. Um, but thanks for the community support and hopefully the businesses got some good connection out of that as well. And then also just put a final plug in for anybody checking, watching at home. Tomorrow's, of course, Super Tuesday, residential primary day. Um, so we're ready, we've been voting for many, many days, but tomorrow's the big day. Um, so make sure to come on out and exercise your right to vote if you would like to. So with that, Mayor, I can turn it back to you.
Just confirming the time that, uh, we're open?
Should be eight to seven, right, like a normal, or seven to eight?
Uh, polls are open from seven AM to eight PM tomorrow.
Do you want to reference?
At your polling locations where you'll be voting.
Roads? Sure, can do that. Councilmember Essler recommended that I just mentioned, so in the work session tonight, we met with our county commissioner, Mr. Droste and some county staff, had a good, robust conversation on county roadway infrastructure, um, traffic issues, uh, the two incoming schools and how that impacts traffic. And so appreciate their continued partnership and just letting residents know that we are always tracking traffic and how our growth is impacting traffic, so thank you for that reminder.
It was a good session, it was a great session, actually. All right, that completes item ten A. We'll move to ten B, upcoming community calendar. We have Planning Commission special meeting on March sixth, uh, Wednesday, six thirty to seven thirty here in the council chambers. We have a subsequent Planning Commission meeting, an updated date of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six thirty to seven thirty, also here in the chambers. Park and Rec's Commission meeting, updated date, March eighteenth, from seven to eight PM. The Port Authority, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six to seven PM here in chambers and the next city council meeting, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven to eight o'clock. And with that, if there's no other business coming before council, uh, move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.